Welcome to the Tuesday, November 10, 2020, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on Channel 12, and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Next up, Kevin, we have some correspondence.
Thank you, Ryan. The following correspondence was recorded. Several emailed letters regarding the hybrid learning model. From Carissa Adams on October 9th, from Angelica and Trevor Agniti on October 22nd, from Joe Bellargen on October 20th, from Marie Carolyn Bowden on October 12th, from George Case on October 19th, from Brian Crawford on October 12th, from Kathleen Dion on October 12th, from Christina Fleming on October 22nd, from Elizabeth and Steve Howard on October 29th, from Jasmine Hutchinson on October 11th, Mary Keane on October 13th, Heather LaPorte on October 23rd, Aleah Mandani on October 13th, Benjamin Mann on October 6th, Elaine Mann on October 12th, Ashley Marshall on October 12th, the Newton Family on October 12th, Deb Novotny on October 27th, Danielle Paninos on October 27th, Samantha Root on October 11th, Carrie St. Amund on October 12th, Dawn Stryker on October 28th, Elizabeth Therian on October 7th, and Lori Wheeler on October 12th. An emailed letter from Mr. Matthew Landon dated November 3rd with a question regarding air quality, an emailed letter from Mr. Joel McAuliffe with an update on the MSA State Fiscal Year 21 budget, an email from Mr. Pete Landon dated October 25th with a Mass Taxpayers Foundation PowerPoint on revenues and recovery dated October 13th.
Thank you. Next up, we have the possibility of a minute.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the October 21st, 2020, school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Tiana?
On page seven, there's just a little typo under number 13. I think it's supposed to say at.
Thank you. I agree. Diane, you have that? Thank you. Anyone else? So do we need a new motion to go as presented, or can we, as amended, or do we need, can we go to? Vote on this thing?
As amended.
As amended, right? Kevin, you want to?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes from the October 21st, 2020, school committee meeting as amended.
There a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Tiana?
Last.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sophie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Next up, we have visitor comments. Always when we're doing this remotely, you to just unmute and make it known that you would like to speak. Seeing done, we'll move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Committee, anyone? Yep, Paul?
I just wanted to say thank you so much to LEAF for hosting a fun socially-distanced gala this past weekend. It was really wonderful to see so many teachers and students and families come together to help raise funds for grants that contribute to making our schools fun and innovative spaces. So congratulations to the amazing LEAF Board and all their helpers for another great event, and thanks for everything you guys do for our schools.
Great, thank you. Tiana?
Just want to congratulate everyone who worked on the Jet Daughter. I see Maxim is with Maxim, great job, and all the, all the team. It's just beautifully creative and, and just, it's awesome.
All right, just a huge thank you to everybody in the district for all the hard work that they've been doing, especially our folks in K1 and 2, everybody involved in getting all those kids back in. I know that Marty and his administrative staff, all of the principals, everybody in those schools, the teachers, the staff, everybody has done just amazing work. And I just, I know everybody on the committee wants to shout out to all of them for everything that you've done, and it's really been amazing. So thank you to everybody for doing that, and the parents for rolling with it and making it all work. So thanks to everybody for that.
Great point, Kevin. Thank you. Anything else? I would also, on the same vein, recognize the athletics. Our coaches have had to go through a lot to have our teams playing this year. Obviously, it's been very difficult situations for them. Got to go to a soccer game this weekend. I know that they're wrapping up. Unfortunately, much of it's due to COVID, but I want to thank the, all the coaches for all the hard work in getting all the kids ready to play. I'm sure it has been the most difficult season they've ever coached. So thanks to them as well. Any other? Next up is business of guests. Marty, a hybrid instructional model update.
Thank you. Appreciate the chance to provide the committee with an update on where things stand in terms of continuity of operations, continuity of learning in the district. And quite a while back, the committee had asked for regular updates from our public health experts. And so with us tonight is Chief John Dearborn, a familiar face to the committee, and also take an opportunity to introduce the new public health coordinator for the town of Long Meadow, Cheryl Messer. Looks like they're together on one camera, so I appreciate you joining us, and I think it would be helpful to get an update from Chief and Cheryl and kind of understand what local conditions are like, what regional conditions are like, what it means for us here in Long Meadow. And perhaps they could shed some light on the new metrics that the, that the state introduced late last week. So turn it over to Chief Dearborn for an update, and I'm sure the committee will have some questions.
Yeah, thank you, super committee. Is everything coming okay?
And as John's getting settled, I just want to pull up very quickly. John, this is something that might provide some context for your comments here. Just a quick little snapshot of some of the metrics that you might be referencing. So feel free to take it away.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay? Yes, all right, great. So good evening, everybody. I think everybody knows me. Cheryl's going to be the CEO, Cheryl Messer, busty. She's our COVID-19 public health coordinator. This is actually a new position for the town that we created specifically to help us with this unbelievable task that's in front of us. She works very closely with Andy Fraser, who's our COVID compliance officer. So you'll be seeing their smiling faces from time to time. They're really helping us a lot of the, really the heavy, heavy lift we have. So last week, we did some messaging regarding the community going to red. And under the whole system, you could fairly easily, if you had faced a couple of bad days despite your numbers, you could move to another designation. There was a, there's a formula to do that, and we were looking at the formula and anticipated that we were going to, going to go red. So we did some messaging. We tried to get out ahead of it. And on Friday, Governor Baker, his administration announced late in the day that they were going to revamp the metric. So, so it didn't change our numbers. It actually just changed the way they averaged it out. So we actually stayed at a yellow, which is a good thing. I think the new system better represents our, our actual cases and the condition of our community. I will tell you that, that the last set of numbers came out, we actually dropped down to nine cases. So these numbers go off and down all the time. We get a spike sticking within, impacting your numbers, and they can, they can, they can change your designation, but it could be a little bit more stable now and give us a better idea of where, where we're going. The cases, you know, we look at cause in different groups. The school age community, we've had a few cases in and out, but overall, there's no evidence of spread within the schools. I know that some children have, students have been, had this isolated quarantine because of this situation. And, you know, that's unfortunate part of the process, the protective strategy. So we can protect the, the masks. So so Marty displayed the, the mat, matrices here. That's last week's number, so two-week case count at the 26th. The average daily, which was 12.1. We did move slightly higher because of that spike. And the rest is really historical data, the 28th deposit test. So we're still doing fairly well. You know, again, I always caveat that we need to continue to do well by taking, taking all the protective strategies, mask, can washing, all the safety procedures, the piles of safety procedures we put in place for the schools. We need to continue to take those very seriously. One of the things that we're really, are concerned about is to look at our campus around us. We do have some communities that are in the red, other communities that are in the yellow, but with higher numbers than us. They're publishing the data for all, really finite data for all communities. So we can really get a situational awareness of the picture of all everything around us. So we do have some concerns there. We, you know, we, we want to be on high on to a certain extent. We know we, we can be impacted by other communities and other activities. So again, we try to do the best we can with all protective strategies. We should be able to maintain. So with that, I'll take any questions. But Marty, is there anything I left out there that you want?
No, I appreciate your comments, Chief. Very helpful. I would add that in addition to our daily attentiveness to the case counts and the community transmission, we continue to put some protective factors in place. Tom Mazza, Assistant Super Finance Operations, is still working with TPW to install additional air purifiers and ionizers. We had a chance to meet with our nursing team recently, and credit to them for taking on the task of working with families who travel over, for whatever reason. And we obviously want and need families to adhere to the Massachusetts Travel Advisory. But our nurses have asked that for children above age 10, that, that families provide us with certification that a negative COVID test has been obtained prior to, 72 hours prior to family's arrival back in Massachusetts, if they do travel out of state. So, you know, so much of what we put in place beginning back in August continues to be augmented and modified. I want to thank the town officials for, particularly the HR department, Erica Jalinas, for working to put together a flowchart to assist employees who might find themselves in a, in a COVID scenario, so that we have a clear understanding of what their responsibilities are, and they have a clear idea what the return-to-work requirements are if they happen to be quarantined. So I appreciate, Chief, I appreciate that the town, you know, has, has brought Cheryl in place. Cheryl has met with us administratively a number of times, and we talk, seems almost daily now, or trade emails. And so it's been an enormous help to us administratively. So we're, we're happy to answer any questions that the school committee has in terms of, you know, what the health metrics point towards in terms of our continued continuity of operations and the continuance of in-person learning.
Chief, thank you for the update. I wonder if you could just touch on something that's going to come up around the Thanksgiving holiday, and that's just your recommendations for travel, to see family, and also to touch on the key point that probably a whole bunch of college kids are coming back, and what your recommendations are for those things as people start thinking about what their holiday plans should be.
Kevin, thanks for that question. We've been discussing, and we're actually putting out, we've kind of adopted in the last few weeks what we call our offensive strategy. I kind of feel like we've been on defense for since last February. With all this new help I have, you know, one of our goals was to try to get out ahead of this. So obviously, there's concerns with the Thanksgiving holidays and the upcoming holidays. Travel, students returning, they're all factors that we need to consider. So we are going to be providing next week and over two weeks, a bunch of information, EPH handouts, things like that, kind of talking about travel. A lot, what we've seen is a lot of the universities are actually, for the students that are going to be returning to Long Meadow, are trying, are doing testing or education prior to students returning, especially those within the Commonwealth, but pretty much nationwide. So I think as a, as a country, the, the higher ed recognizes that they don't want to contribute to this problem. I'm really hoping that people do take that seriously. I would ask people, you know, I have, I have a large family in this area that we've decided to stay with our smaller units and do a virtual Thanksgiving. It's a smart investment for the rest of our society. And, you know, I hope more people take that seriously. So, you know, we do have concerns with that, Kevin, but we're going to do our best to provide public education on that. And I think everybody's on the same page as far as providing that education and asking people to really engage in the collective strategy if they travel or if they're returning to town from somewhere else.
Thank you. Marty?
Yeah, and if, so we, we met at length about this question, and appreciate Kevin raising it. It has been something that I've talked to superintendent colleagues about today. I had a chance to talk to the executive director of the State Superintendent's Association about whether or not he saw some momentum around that. He told me he had not, he's not seeing that. It appears, though that's true, that we will, we can expect a number of college students to come back into the area that, I think, following those conversations and following the meeting that we had with Chief Dearborn and Cheryl and others, that we feel that we can safely stay the course. And that's with the, with the, with all the usual caveats that we will have to, on a daily basis, pay attention to the acceleration of cases. We'll have to pay attention to whether or not there is any community transmission. We'll have to especially pay attention and watch for in-school transmission, which, as the chief said, we have not seen any evidence of in-school transmission yet. And then we'll also have to pay attention to staffing levels. I can't say it enough. Maybe I sound like a broken record, but I think it's important that everyone understand that as the number of cases rise, that means that the amount of contact tracing that has to occur will go up, which means that we might see staff who will need to be in a quarantine protocol. And so it creates sort of thin margins for us. And, you know, we obviously need adults in classrooms to run our buildings safely. And so I think we all need to be mindful that that's one of many factors that we'll continue to watch over the next few weeks. I would say too, and I think this is, you know, I want to get some feedback from the committee and see if this makes sense. But I think if we were to find ourselves in a position where we had to close, let's say it's, you know, the week before, or just a few days before the Thanksgiving break, I think we'd have to make a decision about whether or not it makes sense to come back at all through the, through the course of December. In other words, you know, most districts that have to take breaks, they take two-week breaks, 14-day breaks, which would bring us to the third week of December, which might mean that it really would make sense just to remain in that remote mode for the remainder of the school year. So that's a, I think it's important that we, we understand that that's a, you know, a real possibility. We want to, we think we, again, we think we can, we're sure we can continue in-person learning in the way that we have it set up. And as long as we're having these, you know, again, daily conversations with our partners in the town and, and that we're watching for evidence of acceleration or transmission, either in the community or in our schools. So I think that's, you know, again, I'd probably look for some feedback from the committee on that. If that is kind of a prudent approach, certainly it's within the committee's purview to consider a sort of a preemptive, remote closure. I think it's, it's prudent to have that conversation. But right now, I think, as Chief suggested, are, we're still in a good position in terms of the number of cases that we're, that we're seeing and the complete lack of evidence of any in-school transmission right now.
You mentioned coming up with education.
For the general public, are we getting information? I know there's very publicly not been a whole lot of federal guidance on this, but are we getting information from, for example, Canada, who had their Thanksgiving and then had a big spike three weeks after that? Are we getting information like that to share with people about being smart, what to do over the holiday? Can't hear you right now, Chief.
Can you hear me now? What is going on here? Okay.
Kevin, I missed the first part of your, your question.
I'm wondering where we're getting the information that we are sharing with the general public about, you know, educating them around the holidays and what will be the smarter things to do.
So the, the information we're having, mass DPH, DPC, and CDC is providing live. A lot of the public information is totally what we do based, based upon. So, you know, the do's and don'ts, the suggestions, that really comes from all of that. And in some cases, we'll put our own, the local, or create a spin on it. As far as the, the numbers and the breakdown, we, the perspective of the new system, we actually get a better breakdown of ages than we actually do. A little bit easier for us to see which populations are being impacted. So we're able to do a little bit of analysis that we have with this tool. We've, we've always dug down since we've gone through this to try to, you know, look at different populations and things like that. The student tool, the mass DPH provided, does make it a little bit easier for us to see where we're going and really what, what data graph that, or age group that we, we need to focus on. So you asked something about in and out.
Thank you. You're, you're returning the favor by going in and out on us, I think, a little bit. But you say mass DPH is the main source of information that we're getting. So that is helpful. Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody remote? I can't see right now. Oh. Oh, Tiana, I'm sorry.
I know it's already been said a couple of times, but thank you, Cheryl, for coming aboard, and thank you, Chief Dearborn, for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
So.
We will, we'll, we'll continue to pay close attention over the next, you know, probably for the remainder of the year on a daily basis. And I think we all, as I've said to parents a few times, we all need to have those contingency plans in place in the event that we do need to move to a remote mode. Across the state, it seems that most districts are able to maintain the hybrid pattern. Locally, though, we have seen districts that have had to move to a remote arrangement. South of Tallinn, West Springfield are among, in Agawam are among the districts that right now are in a temporary remote mode. And so I think we all need to understand that there's a lot of factors that we want to continue to look at. I want to thank all the community members who are paying very close attention to all the guidance that, that is being issued by the local boards of health and by the state. Frankly, if you asked our, our teachers, you know, what are, what are your chief concerns among them would be the adherence, our combined adherence to all the guidance. We are all in this together, and our ability to stay open is really linked to the, the, the general adherence to all the guidelines that exist out there. So thanks to everybody for doing the right thing and keeping kids safe and keeping our staff safe.
I just, I think it's important to reiterate what the superintendent just said, and thank you. Thank you to our town leaders here. Thank you so much for all you're doing to support and, you know. But again, I, I think it's important when you see, yes, in Massachusetts, relatively speaking, you know, things are staying open. But we're seeing, we're seeing the scales tipping in Connecticut in some districts where it's, it's not necessarily the number of cases. It's the number of teachers who are out that's causing closure. And, and I can't emphasize enough what Dr. O'Shea just said, which is we have to all do our part to, you know, keep our teachers safe, because you can't do school without teachers. So I, I just wanted to take the opportunity to reiterate that. It's, it's a very real situation. In some of the cases in Connecticut, those districts have actually set benchmarks of percentage of, of, you know, substitutes in the district, or needed subs, or uncovered teachers that, that would, would cause them to close. We haven't done that, and I think we have to, you know, and we trust our administration to sort of make that decision, you know, when the time comes. But at the same time, you know, it's a very real possibility. We always have to be prepared for it.
Great points. Thank you.
I think I'd wrap up just by maybe a quick snapshot of the, the K2 return. It, it has been a successful return to school for our students in K2. To echo what was said earlier, I'm pleased To echo what was said earlier, I'm pleased with the combined effort that everyone made to make this happen from the school committee on down. There's so many details that this could not have happened without everybody's involvement, even our clerical staff, who had to be involved in resetting student information systems and managing hiring paperwork and reassigning class lists. There's so many details that so many people had to be involved with. Our tech team for creating new setups, our custodial team for all the room reassignments, and teachers for their incredible flexibility and the amount of dedication they showed to reinventing their classrooms and welcoming new students and orienting to families. So just a massive effort and what the principals achieved in a short amount of time was, you know, something I've never seen before. It really was remarkable what they did is the type of work that normally happens over the course of many, many, many months. So thank you to Principal Stack, Principal Hutton, and Principal Pratt for their efforts and for the central office admin for their part as well. So I will say, I met today with a group of three through five educators and we want to continue to be attentive to the challenges that they face in this hybrid model. And we'll roll up our sleeves and think about what adjustments we can make to better support children in those grades and all grades, really. And so this is something that, you know, on an ongoing, regular basis, we'll make the adjustments that we need to make this very, very successful. And as the third bullet here suggests, we'll continue to work with families and students on an individual basis to identify students who would benefit from additional in-person learning. That process is going on in every school throughout the week. So that's all I have. If you have any other questions about where things stand operationally or in terms of health and safety or teaching and learning, happy to take some questions.
Thank you. Also, thank you to the town leaders who are doing a great job and these updates are super helpful. I just wanted to go back, Marty, for a second to what you were talking about in terms of the looking at like preemptively going remote because of the concerns of the holiday. And I think there was an email we got the other day that there's 750 college students returning. So I didn't know if we wanted to talk more about that tonight or if we wanted to wait and see what things looked like next time we meet.
Well, you have, your next meeting isn't for a couple of weeks. And certainly that is a decision that is within the purview of the school committee. Alternatively, if the committee would like the administrative team to continue to work with our public health folks to kind of make that decision, again, on a sort of day-to-day basis, we're happy to do that. But again, this, the question that Bronwyn raises is one that is being considered probably at school committees across the Commonwealth about whether or not it makes sense to do that ahead of time. Again, I think, and certainly Chief or Cheryl weigh in here. I think if we saw the number of cases accelerating, if we saw some in-school transmission, if we were worried about community transmission even or spiking positivity rates, then I think that would be my recommendation at this point. It's not my recommendation. My recommendation is that we can safely stay the course. But I would understand that if that's something that you want to talk about further and certainly Chief or Cheryl, you know, we'd welcome your perspective as well.
Yeah, Marty, I think based on conversations we're on over the past days, we're all on the same page with this. I think we've taken a fairly conservative approach. Most of our recommendations to date, I think if we saw certain, certain numbers increasing, and not just in town, if, we do look at the region also. So that's all part of the consideration. We have some pretty robust conversations every time we look at the numbers. So and, you know, we've tried to be conservative. That's actually, you know, being conservative is why you got the messages about red last week. We want to get out ahead of these situations and go on offense with it. So if we see numbers that are indicating something that we need to try to control and taking a break from school is part of that or going into the remote model is part of that formula, we're certainly going to recommend that. So we don't want to get behind on this again. I want to emphasize that. I feel like last, last spring, in February and March, we got behind. And if anything we can do this time to stop that trend, we're going to make that recommendation. So we take this super serious.
Thank you. I think on this topic, Marty, you've repeatedly let the families in town know that there may be the situation where a quick decision has to be made and that we will, due to caution, have to go remote. So they should be aware. And unfortunately, due to the situation, every student in town has already been working remotely. So they do understand that. So that move might be able to be made really quickly. Like you said earlier, people just need to have those contingency plans in place in case something like that happens. So, you know, my feeling is to keep doing what we're doing right now until we see that there's a problem, as long as everyone's made aware that a change might have to happen quickly. That's just my take on it. Anybody else with any more questions for Marty? Kevin?
Yeah, this is changing the topic a little bit, if that's okay, Ron. This is just something that came up at the high school parent advisory council meeting this week, Marty, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to talk to the broader community about it, which is I was really surprised that the number of folks going or students going Cohort C is like 27% or something at the high school. And so I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about that because when Principal Landers was talking, he was concerned that some students were thinking about it more out of convenience than out of safety. And he talked, I thought, really nicely about the challenge from the teacher perspective of trying to teach well when you don't actually know how many kids are going to be in school. And so I just, if you could speak a little bit to that, I think that would be helpful.
No, I appreciate the chance to talk about that because that is a, that is a very real concern. I think you explained it well. You framed it well. Long Meadow High, like other high schools in the area that I've been in touch with, have seen an increase in the number of students that are choosing the full remote option. In recent days and recent weeks, our principals have stressed to families that that remote option should not be done for convenience, that it ought to, that there ought to be some substantive reason that a family decides to move towards Cohort C. And, you know, at the same time, we recognize that if children are not well, we encourage families to keep them home. But it really shouldn't be a matter of daily convenience because, you know, on some particular day, a child just wants to stay home because it does disrupt the flow of instruction for students and for educators. So we've been telling families that if they, we respect and honor their wishes and want to schedule families or students into Cohort C, but that if they do go to Cohort C, that the decision ought to be made carefully and with an understanding that it's become increasingly challenging to shift back into Cohorts A or B. And so that sort of that wait time to come back to in-person learning has probably increased from where we were at the beginning of the year. The state actually put out some guidance that said that there could, districts could, should, may have a four to six-week waiting period for families, for students to transition back from Cohort C into Cohort A or B. Now, we're moving more swiftly than that. I'm not saying that's the standard we're going by, but I think it is an important decision. It has implications for the admin flow of the classroom. So we hope families are not doing it just for daily convenience, that it really needs to be for some health, a bona fide health and safety consideration. But I appreciate you giving us a chance to talk about that.
Yeah, I guess just on that, Marty, I guess from, you know, students being able to go in and out, I'm not a big proponent of that. I don't think that should be allowed for the teachers, for the administration. I personally think that there should be some sort of restriction on the in and out. You know, just to keep this a little bit more consistent. I don't think it's fair for anybody to do that. Whether four to six weeks is a reasonable timeframe, I don't know. But I think some timeframe should be around it. It shouldn't be a week-to-week or a day-to-day thing, in my opinion. It's just not fair.
Yeah.
So just my two cents on it.
And we certainly wouldn't want, for safety reasons, we wouldn't want families to access that to facilitate travel. And frankly, we've seen that. And so it's important that that option not be chosen so that families can get away for four or five days unnecessarily. Again, you know, we honor and trust and respect the decisions that families make. And we want to facilitate the scheduling of students into Cohort C, but it really ought to be, again, for legitimate bona fide health and safety considerations.
Yeah, can I just ask one question? So day-to-day, from the high school perspective, can I call up and switch my kid to Cohort C tomorrow? If my kid is in Cohort C, is that, is that true? Or is it a week, like a week, like next Monday, I'm able to do it?
Yeah, there's a wait period. I'd have to check with the administration at the high school to see what that wait period is like nowadays. But and every, every situation is different. The reasons that families need to make that change could be urgent and could require us to move quickly. So we take it on a case-by-case basis, but I don't, I couldn't tell you exactly what the wait period is. It really shouldn't be a revolving door. It should be a carefully made decision and there should be a discussion between the family and the administration if that's a decision that needs to be made.
Got it. And is it happening, my last two questions, I'll stop on this subject, but is it happening at middle school and anywhere else? And then secondly, I would say everybody is sitting here worried about Thanksgiving. But I view 27% of high school students being able to potentially do what they want at home, you know, without, potentially without supervision is more of a concern to me than Thanksgiving. So that's a huge percent of our student body. How that maybe have access to cars, maybe have access to go do what they want and maybe aren't restricted in whatever way, that would be more of a concern to me, which, you know, obviously we can't control all of these. But that, that sounds like a bigger risk than Thanksgiving to me or a bunch of college kids coming into town. So just my two cents on it. Just on my question though, is this happening in middle school and elementary as well? Or is it just high school?
My apologies. To a greater extent at the high school and we're starting to see the numbers creep up at the middle school. And I'm looking to Sue, see if she has any thoughts on elementary. But I think the elementary numbers are more stable. K-2, we wondered how the introduction of daily in-person learning would affect Cohort C. It does not seem to have moved the needle one way or another. So our numbers are largely holding based on the projections that we had given you back in late October. So it is a report that we can easily access and I could get the committee some information on that. We could, Diane, if you want to make a note to send that information off to the committee.
We actually had students move back in to A or B prior to the switch. Several students moved back in.
I'd like to say to Jamie's point about the high school kids, they are still required to attend the class. Any more free time? Because if they have the permission to leave, they're in their ice block anyway. They can leave the building and go to lunch just as well as they could stay home and have lunch. So I really don't think the high school kids have more complete free time unless they were all gathering at one house to have class online. And that might be a little bit different. But really, I think the high school administration and their clerks do a good job of letting us know whether or not the children have attended classes the way they're supposed to.
We've overhauled our attendance tracking and reporting mechanism so we can identify whether students are physically present, remote-present, remote-absent, et cetera, et cetera.
Thanks to the clerk who told me how I was doing that wrong today, specific form. Gianna, you had a question?
Thanks, Brian. I just wanted to go back to Bronwyn's question. And I'm wondering, or maybe Diane, what is the date for our next meeting?
That's what I have on my calendar, so 24.
And then, okay, so Ryan, could we consider, remember how we put the meeting on the calendar? So could we consider putting a meeting on the calendar for next Tuesday? And then if we don't need it, we don't have it, didn't do that before. I'm just thinking like that would give us a week's worth of data, but also give us a week before the Thanksgiving break to have that fuller conversation if we need to.
Here. The sound is coming way after you say it. So I was listening to you without the earbud. And I, so I know exactly what you said, but I'm just gonna, so the question is whether or not we should plan another meeting in between now. So basically next week. To be able to respond to possible increase in cases, correct?
Yes, just to kind of have that, if need to have that fuller conversation Bronwyn was talking about and giving enough time for people to maybe make those arrangements.
Anybody have any thoughts on that? Nicole?
I don't think it hurts to check in at this point. I agree with you, Ryan, that I would like to keep a close eye on things and not plan preventatively necessarily. Although I also agree with Dr. O'Shea that there is a strong possibility that if we did have to close close to Thanksgiving, it may make sense to remain in that mode through the break. So as not to be yo-yoing in and out of school. That can be a little bit more complicated, especially for scheduling purposes for students. I do think maybe meeting next week would be good. I would also be curious to know, maybe as we're looking at those numbers, if we're looking, I know that we are, just basically to say, I commend you for looking not just at the numbers in the actual school, but in the community as a whole. Because we do know from research now that sometimes students may be asymptomatic and might not be tested. But if family members, other community members are potentially being exposed, that could mean that we are potentially contributing. So I think that's a factor to be considering and I appreciate you guys looking at that closely. It sounds like every day. So thank you.
If we are thinking about scheduling a meeting for next week, could we think about it for Thursday? Does the data come out on Thursdays? And so we would have, you know, like that, the data get released on Thursdays? And so if we met Thursday, next Tuesday night, we'd have some more data. Does the data get released on Thursdays? And so if we met Thursday, next Tuesday night, we'd have some more data.
Chief, would, does the information that we're talking about come out on Thursdays? And therefore if we were going to plan a, a meeting about this information that Thursday would make more sense?
Yeah.
I think what I heard the chief say is that we, we get the information each day and you don't necessarily have to wait for Thursday. So the, the public reports come out on Thursday, but chief could easily give us that information at any moment, I think.
Jamie? I think Suzie was first, but go ahead. Do you want to go? Yeah, I, I guess my, my, my thought on this is I, I really don't want, I don't think we need another meeting. I'd rather them work in real time and let Chief Dearborn and, you know, Dr. O'Shea make the decision in real time. If they see issues, I don't want to wait for a meeting. They, they are the experts and, you know, if they feel that the right thing to do is to make adjustments to how we have this set up, then yes, we should be informed, but you know, they, they obviously are going to be seeing things real time. Stuff that we may not see till a week later. So I'd rather leave it in their hands to make the right decision. Suzie?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Gianna?
Thank you, Jamie and Suzie. I misunderstood that was, I misunderstood that superintendent and he could make that decision. Whether that are bullying or disgusting. So thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Suzie?
Yeah, I just want to, and, and maybe just to be clear. The superintendent made this, the decision to close back in March. And, you know, I think that practice, you know, makes the most sense. He makes the decision to close when there's a snow emergency, when there's other emergencies. And, you know, I, I, I consider this under that same, those emergency categories. So that's my rationale for that.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Marty. That was the end for the update. Yes, yes, okay. So next up is superintendent report.
I'll be brief, but I want to, as Nicole had mentioned earlier, thank our partners at the Long Meadow Educational Excellence Foundation for holding a social distance this past weekend and for working so creatively on our behalf. We had another note, we had our first meeting of the steering committee, the Equity Audit Committee with our partners from the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. Thank you, Sue, for pulling us all together. I thought it was a, a robust meeting. It was an opportunity for us to start to look at some data. The end goal of that process again is to develop a set of recommendations relating to inclusive practice and achieving more equitable outcomes for students. And then another thing that sort of show you that it's, it's in many respects business as usual this year. We met with the visiting team from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, our, our central office team. The NIOSC is here doing a virtual visit and they're meeting with high school staff, high school administration, and they are asking clarifying questions about the self-study that was completed last spring. So it was a good opportunity for us as a team to reflect on where we see some improvements relative to the, to the NIOSC standards. I would mention that in your packet is a enrollment report from NASDAQ, not to be confused with NIOSC. NASDAQ is the New England School Development Council. They annually do an enrollment report and enrollment projections for us. I think it's really an important resource for administrators and school committees to look at in terms of long range planning. And finally, I think at your next meeting, probably be in a position to provide you with an update on winter athletics. It's a little uncertain right now where that's headed. But we're, we're gathering information and have been in conversations with Athletic Director Capitasto. It, it appears that they'll be pushing the, the start date of the winter season, if it were to happen, that appears they'll be pushing that till to sometime after the beginning of the new year. So I, you know, indoor, indoor winter sports are, are challenging amidst this pandemic. So I'm not quite sure if or how this will happen and, but we'll, we'll get a report to you at some point soon. That's all I have.
Thank you. I do not have a chair report today, so we can move on to Maxim for the student report.
Hello. So I just wanted to touch on a few clubs that I didn't get to last time, starting with the Climate Change Club headed by Junior Ella Barton. They're currently setting up a social media account. The Ask Schools Match Wits Club is they're going to be having a academic quiz bowl tournament on December 13. And that's happening online and they're preparing for it online as well. Pottery Club, this year, students are planning and doing most of activities virtually over Zoom. The club will meet every other week for the first month and they'll be doing virtual activities such as working with pileable materials at home. So that's clay dough, as in bread dough. They have video tutorials from the club advisor, Ms. Gross. And other students may need to show different clay working techniques as well. And they'll also be watching some other videos, a BBC show called The Great Pottery Throwdown. And they're eventually hoping to do in-person school activities with the, the only like the 13 students that are in the club working with sanitized materials in one room. The Red Cross Club headed by Senior Catherine Lee. They have had two meetings this year, around 25 members have consistently been showing up and participating. Their first project they've completed is making thank you, a thank you video for veterans, which will be sent out to the VA hospitals across the state for Veterans Days tomorrow. The next project will be making thank you cards and holiday cards for local hospitals that they hope to deliver next month. They're still figuring out the logistics of this, but they're probably doing some drop off system where they'll ask club members to leave their finished cards outside of their house and we'll drive by, drive by and collect them. But for the Drama Club, I spoke with Katie Ryan, the head of the Drama Club. Things have been a little bit slow. They've been having their meetings online. They would like to do, start, start some stuff in person. The Jet Jotter, which I'm part of, we posted a lot of new stories last Tuesday. We're currently working on a new issue to be released sometime around Thanksgiving, after Thanksgiving, whether that be online or also an edition in print. We have a lot of new people that joined, a lot of underclassmen and that are active in the club. The editors are doing a great job working with them. We would like to thank all the faculty for being available for interviews and town staff and administrators too. I recommend people visit thejetjotter.com to read some of the writers' great work. The Stock Club, I talked to James McGoughman for this information. They have their second meeting, third meeting actually today now. They look at the stocks since the pandemic and how the election has impacted the stocks as well as the new ballot measures passed in some states, so the legalization of some drugs and sports betting. And they're seeing how that's affecting stocks. And that's it for most of the clubs. A common theme that I keep hearing from club leaders is confusion about in-person activities, finding out when they could do some of these in-person activities. But that's all I've heard.
Thank you, Max. It's always great to hear how many clubs we have going on at the high school and, and also great to recognize the veterans like you just did. Very important for everybody to thank the veterans, not just tomorrow, but every day. Other reports, LPVC?
No, we have a meeting next week.
Thank you. Energy and Sustainability?
No update.
Open space. Good. Subcommittee Reports, Finance Subcommittee?
Thank you, Ryan. Finance submitted earlier this evening to review a couple items in advance of tonight's meeting. In your packet is the first of the FY 21 Year Today Budget Reports, which the Finance Subcommittee reviewed. I think I, what I indicated to them and what I'm saying to you guys is it's, it's my best guess in terms of trying to project out where this year's budget will, will go over the course of the next eight months. You know, there, it's so fluid in terms of positions still being vacant at this time. Hiring staff associated to the increased, increased sections in the K1, 2 grade levels. So it's really, it's really, we're keeping an eye on it, but I would say, you know, it's subject to change as the year progresses. So there were a couple areas that I, I pointed out, two areas in particular, one being around the food service program. With the amendment being on our agenda a little later tonight, but just with the reduced number of participation in terms of less students being in school, resulting in less meals being served is going to reflect and reduce revenue. So it's something we most certainly will keep our eye on. And the other area is athletics, again with increased cost associated to additional transportation, safety procedures and materials needed for the protocols with potential reduced revenue. No gate receipts for fall sports, less participants, football had a lower number based on the potential of a, a later season. So again, so I, I, in the projection, I estimated additional subsidies that we may need as the year goes on. Again, hard to say at this point in the year where we'll end up, but what you have in your packet is my best guess at this point. As I mentioned, food service, it's a little later on our agenda, but to give you a quick update in regards to the program. I mentioned a few meetings ago that the federal government had extended or offered a program to provide for free meals for students till December or until funding ran out. Short, a short time ago, we learned that they are extending this through the entire school year. So through June, all students will be able to participate in the lunch program at no charge. They'll just be able to come through the line and get a meal. We also implemented a curbside pickup. It's twice a week on Mondays and Wednesdays here at the high school. We're seeing anywhere from 250 to 300 meals being distributed. And when you come in, you'd get either two or three meals depending upon the day. So we're, we're serving anywhere from 500 to 900 meals on, you know, any given Monday or Wednesday. So again, that's helping in terms of supporting the community when school's remote and providing meals for students when they're not in school. And again, those are at no cost. So we encourage families to participate in the program or come and pick up meals here at the high school on Mondays and Wednesdays between 3:30 and 5 o'clock. With the food service program though, like, as I mentioned, the finance sub, with the reduced participation, we're keeping our eye on because we, we obviously still have costs associated to running the program, labor costs, meal costs associated to every meal we produce. And some of those are even increasing based on the expanded service times specifically at the elementary schools. Now having almost one lunch serving per grade, we've had to add time in order to accommodate the amount of time we need to, to get all the students through the lunch service line. So it's again, early in the year, but I just want to make sure it's on everybody's radar that it's something that we'll be keeping our eye on and monitoring as the year progresses. And the, the third item that Finance Sub discussed was the FY 22 budget. We, we have a meeting scheduled on Monday, a joint meeting with the Select Board and Finance Committee to discuss the FY 22 budget. It will be the preliminary projection that the town's finance, chief financial officer will present related to the FY 22 budget. Hopefully we'll get those documents out to the full committee later this week. Which will include the assumptions that Paul Pesterzic made in regards to that projection. And, you know, the, both revenue and expenditure projections and how that will play out based on those assumptions. The process, I think, will follow the normal timeframe. We normally have to submit an approved budget by mid-February, right before February vacation in order to meet the timeline to have the warrant, the, the, the budget for FY 22 ready for the annual town meetings warrant, which is usually in May. So we have more information to come. We'll, we'll keep you posted as, as the process gets underway. And if you have any questions, once those documents come out later this week, please feel free to give me a call, contact me.
Next time. Anybody have any questions? Kevin?
Just a, a quick clarifying question. That meeting with the Select Board next week, where is that?
I believe it's a, it's a virtual, it's a remote meeting. I think there'll be a link that, that'll be sent out if it hasn't already been sent out, but it'll be a, a virtual meeting.
Anyone else? Next time. Policy Sub?
Experiencing some lag with your. We have a few policies for review and first reading by the school committee this evening. There is a textbook selection and adoption process policy that's file AIJJ. We have a file JRAA, which is Remote Educational Services and Student Confidentiality. And then there's file DI, which is Fiscal Accounting and Reporting. Those are three policies that are, that have made their way through Policy Subs and one of them, the textbook selection and adoption has made its way through Curriculum Subs and are there for first review and then we'll have a period of public comment and then they'll come back to the committee for final vote. I will say that with regard to textbook selection and adoption process, this was in response to some committee-wide discussions around, you know, being sure that we have accounted for curriculum adoptions and textbooks adoptions through the budgeting process and being sure that we have sufficient curriculum development behind the adoption of any textbook. So that, that is in relation to IJJ. The Remote Educational Services and Student Confidentiality Policy, it really reflects the commitment that we made to staff back in August, which is that we wanted to make sure that as we moved into this remote arrangement, that we had policies in place that could communicate to families what our expectations were around protecting student confidentiality. So this is a policy that was drafted by our attorneys at Murphy, Hessey, Tumi and Lehane. And we, we think it articulates the, the federal privacy protections that students are entitled to even in a remote arrangement. Fiscal accounting and reporting is a, is a policy that was recommended by Mr. Mazza to the Policy Sub and he can speak to that if you have any questions. Finally, Policy ADA-E, it's actually an exhibit. It's not quite a policy. This is an exhibit that Policy Sub has recommended actually for removal from your policy manual. It is really too specific to a set of school committee goals that were developed back in 2005. So it's really just a dated document that doesn't belong in your policy manual any further. So those are for your consideration, Diane. Could you explain the, the review, public review process in the first reading? And when this will come up for vote again? At the, for us?
Sure. So the policies will be posted to your, to the website for 30 days. They'll come back to you for second reading and approval hopefully on your meeting in December. I believe it's like December. December 8th. So it'll come back to you for the December 8th. It'll be, well, that would be just shy of 30 days. Otherwise it'll wait till January.
So any discussion that the committee?
So any discussion that the committee might want to have, we could have that this evening, Diane? Or is it typical to wait until the public review period has lapsed?
No, they can discuss now after first reading.
Okay.
If there's something they see.
Questions or, or comments for any of us? I think the, the, the policies that you see came to us with a recommendation from the policy subcommittee. And the textbook one also came with a recommendation from the curriculum subcommittee.
Any questions at this time?
Are you, did you say curriculum?
Sorry, I thought we talked about curriculum already, but please, I didn't mean to skip curriculum, go first.
Curriculum is just, we met before this meeting and we reviewed the policy that was brought forward, IJJ, for textbook and recommend it.
Thank you. That was a big topic earlier this year, to you very much. Brownwin, eval sub? Evan, Brownwin, are you there? Can you hear me?
Oh, there she is.
Oh, I can hear you. I couldn't hear you till just right now. We did have an eval subcommittee meeting on October 29th. And Superintendent O'Shea shared his annual plan with us. And we had some discussion about it and he is ready to present it to the entire committee.
Thank you. That is going to lead us in shortly to that. We have a few things before that, but that will be coming up. Thank you, Brownwin. So under new business, Tom, the food service contract?
Thank you. On your agenda tonight is a request to authorize an amendment to the food service contract for our provider Cafe Services. This should be the third amendment for their contract, basically renewing their services for the 2021 school year. Just a very, very quick overview. The, we're allowed to have a vendor operate, but we're required to annually renew their services up to five years. After a five-year period, you're required to go out to rebid a process under USDA guidelines. So this renewal, the amendment that is on your agenda for consideration would be for renewal of year three in that five-year cycle. And it is in terms of, in compliance with the terms of the contract that we entered into with Cafe Services two years ago.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Seeing done, there's a possible motion?
I move that on the school committee, I move that the school committee renew the contract with Fresh Picks Cafe, the Division of Cafe Services for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the school committee.
Your motion is our second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing done, we'll go to a vote. Tiana? Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Brownwin?
Yes.
And yes for me. Next up is the annual plan from superintendent.
Thank you. As Brownwin mentioned earlier, had an opportunity to meet with the evaluation subcommittee to consider, introduce my annual plan. So as part of the regular evaluation process, superintendents are required to present annual plans. And there are typically three components that go into that annual plan. There's a set of professional practice goals, a set of student learning goals, and then also district goals. And so the, the process, the cycle that, that superintendents go through in the evaluation process mirrors the process that all educators experience. And so I'm happy tonight to provide the committee with an introduction to my annual plan for your consideration. The entire document is in your packet and I'm prepared to, to a screen share if that would be helpful. I do, I would like to take just a quick opportunity to just sort of share one slide. Don't worry, not a slide deck, just one single slide, actually two, sorry, two slides that hopefully capture what I'm trying to achieve with this annual plan. So one second here. So one of the important things for me personally is to ensure that there is alignment across the system between the school committee goals that you've spent some time on at a recent meeting, my goals, district goals, and then also individual school goals. And we don't want to find ourselves in a situation like these railroad construction team where tracks are late and, and don't line up and the train's not able to continue down the tracks. So it's one of my favorite visuals when we talk about systemic alignment. I hope what, when you see the, the document that's in your packet, my hope is that you see a common thread that runs through the goals that you developed through your retreat process and were approved at a recent meeting, the annual plan that I'm presenting tonight, the district goals that we've identified for ourselves for 2021. And I've also included a template that the individual schools, that the six schools will use as the basis for their school improvement plan. So again, I hope you see that there's some commonalities that stretch across all of those, those strategic documents. I will note that we had concluded a three-year district improvement plan at the, at the, in June of 2020. I think it was our hope that in the spring and into the summer and fall, that we would have an opportunity to engage in a strategic planning process that would result in a new three-year district improvement plan. But the pandemic had, had other plans for us. I think we collectively felt that it would be best just to have sort of almost a, a one-year bridge plan, something that will carry us through the pandemic and help us be focused on the issues that are sort of pressing and most important to us. And so that's the, the district goal document that is in your packet. My hope is that we'll get back to that place where we have a three-year plan that stems from a kind of a wide-ranging stakeholder engagement process. I think our work with CLE will position us for that. I think from that equity audit will come a set of recommendations on how we can achieve more equitable outcomes for, for students in Long Meadow. So I think we'll be, we'll be well-positioned to do that. So I think what I hope you'll see is that in the goals documents that are in your packet, that are in a single file, that there are common components. I think the, the most, one of the most pressing areas for us to focus on this year, and this really came directly from the school committee, from some feedback that we got from the committee, is really a very strategic focus on anti-racist, identity-based, inclusive educational practices. And so we, we want to, though there, though we have, you know, some other strategic initiatives that maybe are paused right now, frankly, we felt like this is one that we had to make sure that we were proceeding with in a, in a very purposeful, direct way. And so in your goals, in my annual plan, in the district goals that we've identified for ourselves, and in the individual school improvement plans, you'll see that focus on anti-racist educational practice. And there's some specific practices that are articulated for me in, in my annual plan. And then the second common component really relates to just making sure that we're, we're managing the health and safety of students and staff amidst this pandemic and that we're, we're ensuring, while we're in the middle of that, ensuring the learning and growth of all students. So that really is a kind of a, a quick conceptual overview of what I'm hoping to achieve with my annual plan. I want it to fall in line with the goals that the committee has articulated for itself and for the district. And I obviously want it to support and fall in line with district and school goals as well. Quick note that the individual schools are working with their individual school councils on the development of their school improvement plans. So those will come to the committee probably at your first meeting in December, which really isn't too far off of when we would normally present school improvement plans. We've identified a sort of a school improvement planning cycle that stretches from November of one year to the end of October of the next year. So those individual school improvement plans are in development as we speak. So the annual plan document is in your packet. Just let me know if you'd like me to share it on the screen or I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, or I could explain it further, whatever would be helpful to you. One second. Got the right document? There we go. I'm sorry. All right. So those are goals that your, your own goals that ought to be familiar to you. And then the next part is the, the components of my individual annual plan. The, the professional practice goals relate to that anti-racist, inclusive educational practice. My hope is that I can lead this district as we expand our capacity at the organizational level and at the individual educator level to make sure that we're providing inclusive services to all students. And that will happen through a variety of practices. It will happen through ensuring that we have curriculum materials and experiences that are representative of all groups, that we have provided appropriate professional development. And we also have, interestingly, a cohort of teachers that are going to be engaged with better lesson coaches in this area. And thank you to Sue for pulling that work together. It's actually 13 educators I think we're up to now, if I remember correctly, that will be engaged as mentees and that will work with Better Lesson on how to incorporate culturally responsive practices. And so my hope is that I can be involved directly with that cohort and that I can learn alongside them. And I have opportunities to observe the, the lessons that they are, that they are developing. I will note that the, the component of this plan that would seek to have me do those direct observations, I want the committee to know that that goes back to the June recommendation that the committee had for me in my evaluation that was around ensuring that I had opportunities to directly observe educational practice and that I have a on-the-ground understanding of, of what was happening relative to our, our goals. So I hope that's reflective of the committee's direction that they provided me in that area.
I have, I have a question on that one. I don't know if it's a question, but. We're looking forward to seeing. So my, my question or, or wondering is, rather than just go by yourself, are you thinking about a team of leaders within each building? When you go in a building, the principal going with you? Is there going to be like a little observation team, maybe three or four people who go with you? So it's not just a solo visit and then you can debrief afterward?
I would, I'd be open to that change to the plan and, and to bring along a few of our educators with us at these, the, the understanding that the observation that happens virtually is not as rich and rewarding, but I, I think it still would be worthwhile. So I, I'm happy to.
I don't know if it needs to be changed. I mean, it's your plan and you're saying you want to go directly observe. So you're still suggesting that it makes sense to have a coach or, or a school leader with you so that they could say, well, this is how we're doing certain things and give you some feedback and something.
Yeah, that works.
The way it's written is fine. I just think don't go by yourself.
Yeah. The, the second component really relates to.
I'm sorry. I know Ryan didn't see me, so I'm butting in, sorry. If I, if I could just kind of, Marty, going back to your original, just on that previous component, going back to your original slide about systemic alignment. And again, I think, you know, as a district, you know, yeah, we're in a funky time. And, but we have an opportunity to sort of establish that, you know, what are those best practices across the district and across schools? What can be, you know, what can be seen as the, as the real through lines? You know, from, from a kindergarten lesson through to a 12th grade lesson? You know, like what, what are those, those key components of, and, and being intentional specifically this year about the anti-racism, you know, effective teaching practice, all of that within this, I think is, is really, is really critical. So I, I think I just want to be cognizant of the fact that while you directly observing is, is an important part of this, I think, just to reiterate Ryan's point and kind of take it a little bit further, that it's a district-level kind of expectation that you're, you're sort of standard-setting and then kind of build from there. I hope that, does, Ryan, does that kind of jive with what you're, what you were saying as well?
I think it says in there, sharing. No problem, because obviously some of the levels don't have assistance. But if you could have somebody come from another building and also join the observation, that's a way to get it, building to building. It can be done. I know that elementary levels always have school leaders or teacher leaders who can, who can be in charge while the principal's out. So if you're in center, you bring Amy to center with you. I think that's a helpful thing as well.
But I think to Suzie's point, I, I want this to have value to the entire district. And, and I would want, you know, encourage the committee to hold me accountable to report back to you about what I've seen throughout the course of the year and, and really, you know, make public the, the great work and the healthy challenge that, that our teachers are taking on in this area. So I look forward to, I look forward to doing that sort of, to amplify the, the lessons that I observed through the, through that Better Lesson Coach-Mentee Process. And then the second part, I'm sorry, I don't want to move too quickly. Any other questions on that before I move on? Okay. And then the, the second part really relates to the, making sure that we are prioritizing the health and safety of staff and students and that we're on an ongoing basis, ensuring that we're being responsive to ever-changing guidance. And the guidance does change. I mean, we've seen, we've seen new CDC guidance, we've seen new health, state health metrics. We're, we're always trying to equip teachers with the tools and strategies that will make them successful. Our tech director, Nick George, as recently as today, put out a, I think it was today or yesterday, put out a message to staff asking if they would benefit from having a second monitored assistant with remote and. to assist them with remote instruction. So we just, we're not done. We're, we're, we're really committed to giving teachers the, the tools and the time that they need to be successful. And, and obviously that, that's an important part of the goals that I've laid out here tonight. The next, the next set is, is really that third component of my annual plan. And, and that is the district goals. Again, it, it reflects my individual goals. It describes how this work will happen at the district level. And then, of course, you'll see that reflected at the, at the school level as well. I'm impressed at the work that the staff has already done in the area of, of curating curriculum materials to ensure that we have a wide representation of perspectives and, and, and the backgrounds of our students. And then, again, finally, the, the, the work that we're doing around district-wide, what we'll need to do to ensure that in-person learning is done safely and that we're continually committed to trying to identify opportunities for more in-person learning, if it can be done safely. So you'll see some of the activities that have been underway and will continue to be underway. And then finally, I've included in your packet a, a template that the individual schools will use to, sorry, it's sideways here. Let me see if I can rotate it for you. Get you dizzy. The template that the individual schools will use to develop their school-based plans. So it is a purposefully incomplete template because we want the schools to take that template and articulate what that work will look like at the building level. So, there you go. Any additional thoughts or questions?
Thank you. Anybody else with a question?
Marty, thank you for this. Definitely appreciate the work that you put in to put this together. And thanks to the folks on the eval subcommittee for going over this. I, I definitely agree that the, the two goals, your big goals you highlighted are the right ones. I'm glad that you didn't try to put things in there that just weren't realistic. It seems like in this year, we've got to be realistic. And I think those definitely were what we talked about. So thank you for that. I just had one, one question. I don't think this, I, I don't know if this is a revision to the plan, but just one thing I'm curious about that's related to your second goal about educating safely and all that. And again, this may be for a future discussion. It's the, the question of, you know, what are our, our teachers learning in the remote and hybrid mode that could improve their teaching when we get back together in person for real? And I think that is something, I, I'm sure the teachers are thinking about that, right? And it would be really cool if we could learn across the district what people are going to keep with what they've been doing. I know at Smith, we talk about this a lot. And there definitely are things that we're going to do differently in person because we were forced to be remote. And again, I, I'm not convinced that needs to be in your plan, but I, I don't want to lose the opportunity that we're getting right now as we, we think about what teachers can learn from this.
Yeah. I think, I think you're asking somewhat rhetorically, but I, I think that's a great question that we should keep front and center. And because I, I think we hear that from teachers all the time, that their instructional practice has grown in so many ways under really challenging circumstances. And so when we get back to that normal life, you know, what, what elements of the remote practices they've been using, can they carry over to regular, normal instruction? I think that, that will, I think that's a fascinating question. You know, certainly the, the, the technology integration that teachers have been forced to introduce into their classrooms, I think will be powerful. And I think the, the independence that we've needed from students in this hybrid model will serve us well and help us understand how to work with students in terms of developing their own independence as learners and helping them manage their own learning. And I, our students have had to take on additional responsibility that maybe they haven't had to take on in the past, where maybe in a in-person arrangement, fully in-person arrangement, it's, everything is more scripted and handed to them. But the students have had to be go-getters themselves to figure out how to construct their own learning opportunities. So yeah, I, I like the question a lot. It's, I'm happy to incorporate that into the plan if, if that is something that the committee would like to see.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Kevin, for bringing that up. I think there's so much value to really, you know, kind of curating all that, all those, those learnings. And, and I would personally, as a school committee member, I would love to actually have the teachers, you know, kind, kind of come and talk to us about that and, and sort of share that so we can celebrate all of that learning when, when, when it's a good time for them. But certainly, I think, you know, the more we can, you know, sort of crack the code on, on good teaching and learning and, and demonstrate it for the community, I think the, the better we all kind of like, you know, work together. We're, you know, parents, parents are seeing things on, on Zoom, you know, here and there as they're, as they're around. But to sort of unpack it for, as to why, you know, certain things, certain strategies are being implemented, I think would be really helpful for, for all, for the community. And I agree with you, the self-directed learning that has come about as a result of this and, and the needs for students to be more self-directed, that's like one of the greatest benefits of this that I, that I've seen for sure. So let's celebrate that and have the teachers come, come share all that with us.
I second that. I don't think it needs to be. No, I can't hear you because I'm muted. Anybody have any other questions? Tiana?
I just want to say thank you for making component number four. Mental health, priority, it's easy in a pandemic to be focused on physical health. But I appreciate that the mental health is also included.
Great point, Tiana. The, the SC on the mental health is incredibly important. Any other questions? All right. Remote instruction on inclement weather days. Oh, sorry. Possible motion on the floor.
I move on the recommendation of the evaluation subcommittee that the school committee approved the annual plan 2020-2021 for Superintendent Marty O'Shea as presented.
Second.
Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Tiana? Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Thank you, Superintendent. Now onto inclement weather days.
Okay. So, snow days potentially could be, am I muted? Snow days potentially could be different in the, in this school year. As we, as we come upon the potential for inclement weather, the Department of Education has given us the local discretion to treat, um, snow days as, treat remote learning days as snow days so that they, the days would not have to be made up later in the year. The DESI guidance on this indicated that the decision would be made at the local level. It's, it's somewhat vague as to whether it is, you know, sort of the discretion of the superintendent. But I think the practice in most communities is that the decision has come to the school committee to authorize the superintendent to treat inclement weather days as remote learning days and therefore avoiding traditional old-fashioned snow days. So my recommendation would be that we take advantage of this option and that if we have some inclement weather, that we treat, we make an announcement that it's a remote learning day. It, then it's counted as time on learning and would not need to be made up in June. But I think it's for the, for the school committee's consideration as to whether or not you'd like to authorize us to handle it that way.
Sorry, I'm trying to find the document that was referring. Oh, there we go. Found it. Never mind. Okay, so I have a question for you about the wording of this, saying that remote learning may include synchronous or asynchronous components provided that students have opportunities to regularly interact with teachers, just through feedback, office hours and other regularly scheduled individual student interactions. I'm curious what your vision of those remote learning snow days would be? Would they be set up the way that currently remote days are set up, where students are clocked in for the whole day? Or would it be a more asynchronous, there's some work, you work at your own pace, you can check in with teachers as needed, model?
No, it would be the former, that we would follow the, the schedules and the instructional blocks that are, are set up and that it would, we would simply handle it the way we would if it were a, a full remote learning day. So it wouldn't be simply asynchronous, independent work, students would expect regular interaction with their teachers throughout the instructional day.
I, I, you're probably right, Marty, but this makes me really sad. It's a snow day. Like, we all look forward to snow days, don't we? So I don't know. I, I, it just makes me sad. And, and I think, I'm happy that Maxim is like agreeing with me. But yeah, I, I, I mean, I think I get it. I'm also kind of nervous, like.
This is a senior who would not.
So for Maxim, this does work out well.
And that has nothing to do with that my, my high schooler is also a senior. But I, I mean, I do think practically, it does make me a little nervous if we had snow days to imagine all of our kids out at the country club sledding together in the middle of a pandemic. So I, yeah, I mean, I think it probably makes sense, but I just want, like, it makes me sad.
I just, I want to echo what Kevin's saying. I agree that practically it is possible that this makes the most sense and putting the seniors aside, who I know this is a really big issue for. From all the other perspectives, I mean, so much has been changed this year with COVID and that, that like joy and excitement of there might be a snow day, a surprise day off, the fun way that you've handled that in the past, Dr. O'Shea, with families getting to be involved on that and some of the younger kids being able to call and tell everybody that there's a snow. It's, it's, it's exciting to have that surprise day off and be outside and build the snowmen and bake the cookies and, and have a day where you don't. I also think for some of our parents of younger students to know that like, my kid is home today, but also can just play and do what they're doing. I don't have to now give up my workday to like be on and supervise remote learning all day is another factor. But I also agree with you that I don't love the, I don't love the image of knowing that everybody might be congregating together. I realize it's a purely romantic argument just for what it's worth, but.
Yeah, but just a quick question. Are we, is, are we talking about like future policy or just till the end of June? Is this like, is this like a forever thing we're talking about or just till June?
It would just be till June. This is a one-year possibility that DESI has laid out for us. Yeah, it's funny. I, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead. You first.
No, I was going, I was going to say, you know, in the past, there have been districts that experimented with lizard bags. And I was never a fan of lizard bags for the reason that Kevin described and Nicole described, which is, snow days do give us a chance to, you know, catch our breath and enjoy a snowy day in old-fashioned ways. On the other hand, I think everyone but the seniors will thank us in June when the day doesn't have to be made up. So.
I just had a, a quick question. So usually when on, if, before we were doing the remote, the teachers were going to school. But if it was a, a snow day where it would be not good for the students to go to school, would the teachers also be able to stay at home? Just double checking.
Yes, that, that's a great question. We would not expect staff to be in on those days. And I, I think Nicole asked a good question earlier. I, I would want to assure families that, you know, in fairness, we should note that DESI has laid out very specific components that remote learning models must have, that, that this cannot be just a, a day of, of independent work where teachers are not engaged. The remote academic work has to be aligned to state standards. There's got to be a policy for issuing grades that might be assigned during those remote days. There has to be a system for tracking attendance as well. So all of those things would, would be in place. It would be as normal a remote learning day as we could make it.
Thanks.
More comments? My comment would be school and. Just more valuable. Just my opinion. There's a possible motion if anyone is interested.
I know that the school committee approved.
The school committee approved the use of remote instruction on days when school would be closed due to inclement weather, as long as there is sufficient reason to believe there is no issue with internet or electricity connectivity in town.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Yes, Tiana?
I just want to say I'm going to focus on the mental health and the joy and the romance in the culture. I think it's all very important.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nicole?
I'm just wondering on one last final question, has there been any staff feedback on this? Is this a conversation that has come up? Okay.
Committee would, would like us to kind of gather some feedback from families or staff. We could do that if you wanted to bring it to your next meeting. You could do that if you feel like it's more than you're ready to vote on without that feedback. We have not, I have not polled families or staff on this question.
No.
Well?
Yes.
Sadly. Kevin?
Sadly, but yes.
Yes.
Uh, Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you. Next up is the naming committee appointment.
Sorry, Maxim.
Yes. I'm sure Maxim has already texted it, the entire senior class to. I'm sure Maxim has already texted it, the entire senior class to. So we received a, we received a notice. To. Received a proposal, an application to name a portion of the school facility. In honor of a long, that longtime Long Meadow educator. The. Application, the proposal needs refinement. I have been in touch with the applicant. The first step though is simply for the committee to name. Three members to a naming subcommittee. The subcommittee would consist of the three school committee members and. Two others, myself and one other appointed by me representing the, the interests of the portion. Of the buildings and grounds that would be affected. So we, I'd ask that we not necessarily. Get into the merits or demerits of the proposal at this point because like I said, I think it still needs additional refinement, but we simply would need. Three committee members to be involved with. That. Subcommittee to consider the application to name. A school facility per the application. Yeah, the three, yep.
Marty, I just had a quick question. So I would definitely. Love to be on this committee. I just want to make sure. That it wouldn't be a conflict of interest because I did back in the day coach track and field with Mr. Divine. So. I just, I just wasn't sure about that.
Sure, yeah. No, that's a, that's a great question. We could look into that for you, Bronwyn. I, I'm thinking that it wouldn't be. I think the, the educator in question has touched a lot of lives and so it, it might be a challenge to find someone who hasn't. Worked with him at some point, but we could look into that for you to see if there's, would be any restriction.
Okay. Thanks.
So Bronwyn put herself forward. Anybody else interested in being on this committee?
I'd be happy, but I would defer if. Other people are waiting to raise their hand.
Anyone else interested? So I can be the third. So if we can assume that Bronwyn is able to do it, it'll be me, Bronwyn. Good.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2. To conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units B, C, D, E, F, H. And Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, to repeat, the school committee will meet in executive session pursuant to Master in Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units B, C, D, E, F, H. And Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene, to reconvene into open session. Any discussion? Requires a roll call vote. Tiana? Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Thank you. And yes for me. So we are going to executive session and we will be returning. Thank you.
Two, one.
Welcome back for your reconvening to open session.
I move that the school committee approve the MOAs for units B, C, D, E, F, and H. With revised PPE language as included in the MO. MOU. Sorry, let me, let me start that over again. I haven't finished. I move that the school committee approve the MOUs for units B, C, D, E, F, and H. With revised PPE language as included in the MOU with unit A dated September 26, 2020. And we authorize the chair to sign the MOUs.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Tiana?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
A yes for me as well. Another possible motion?
I move that the school committee adjourn the November 10, 2020, school committee meeting.
There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Another roll call vote. Tiana? Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.